Okay, I'm going to call to order this regular city commission meeting of Monday, August 4th. All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, we begin by acknowledging the land on which we gather is the territory of the Ottawa and Chipewa peoples who have stored this land through the generations. Thank you for your strength and resilience in protecting this land and inspiring us to uphold our responsibilities to do the same. With that, we'll get going with the roll call from our clerk, acting clerk, Sarah Lutz, please.
Commissioner Werner?
Here.
Commissioner Stanley?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Here.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Mayor?
Here. Okay. I wanted to start out, this is our first meeting since the incident at Walmart a couple of weeks ago now almost, a lot of things to pass through news cycles, it's a blur, we've all, you know, we found ourselves in a position that a lot of communities have found themselves in in different ways and that you never want to be in. And so I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge everyone from our citizens who intervened, to the 911 dispatchers, to our first responders, both our city and our county, who acted so quickly that we can only imagine it must have, it really made an impact on saving the lives that were saved, and Munson's outstanding trauma team, and all of the community who has come out in support. So I wanted to take a moment, acknowledge that, thank our community for all of its work at every level. And because news cycles do tend to go, come and go, we don't always hear what happens. And so I just wanted to give an update, thank you to the chief for letting me have this information today. We have three in good condition that are still at Munson. We have six who are treated and released, and two have been treated and transferred to other hospitals for more care. So I wanted to say that, again, we still have good, overall good prognosis for everyone. We have great teams working on this, and our thoughts are with the families and the victims, and we wish them a speedy recovery. So with that, I did want to go ahead then and get our meeting started, but I didn't want to let that go, even though it's been a long time in the news cycle. It hasn't been, and we know our community will be dealing with this for a long time. So with that, I will hand it over to our interim city clerk, or city manager, for any announcements.
Yes, good evening. That's my first meeting sitting in this spot, so thank you for that opportunity. I've got a few announcements and things to share for this commission meeting, which is August 4th, 2025. Early last week, I was walking downtown near Horizon Books, and a member of our community who was in a wheelchair just needed somebody to help push them a couple of blocks. And I just wanted to share that when I was doing that, it was very difficult at one particular intersection that we went through to negotiate the curb, if you will. And it gave me sort of a firsthand appreciation for what that is like. And so I'm just really proud to share that Deb Allen, our ADA coordinator and the assistant city manager, is going to be working with a number of folks to do an audit of our downtown sidewalks and crosswalks. And I appreciate the compassion and empathy with which that team is going to approach that. And then, in an effort to increase recreational opportunities, I just wanted to share that I signed an MOU with the Northern Michigan Mountain Bike Association for the design and development of a mountain biking trail system at Hickory Hills. So that's exciting. Yeah, and the Parks and Recreation Department or Division has begun the development of a five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and that plan is necessary to seek grant funding from the state of Michigan. And a community survey is currently available and open on the city's website under projects. And so we ask that anyone interested in giving feedback on our Parks and Recreation five-year master plan, take that survey. And along the lines of what the mayor shared at the beginning, I just want to share that the city is working with city, with service providers locally, within the state, and on the federal level on crisis intervention services. Our communications director and I had a meeting with a number of folks who assist communities. Sadly, this is necessary, but it is. They assist communities with providing crisis response services. With the work of our Grand Traverse County Prosecutor's Office, who's taking the lead on this, a comprehensive resource webpage that will serve as a virtual community resilience center will be targeted, is targeted to be published this week, and we'll be promoting that widely. And then lastly, with respect to announcements from me, I just wanted to share that we currently do not plan a city commission meeting for Monday, August 11th, and likely not one for Monday, August 25th. Likely, the next city commission meeting will be two weeks from tonight. That'll be August 18th, a regular meeting. But do plan on potentially an extra meeting or two in September as we work on objectives and key results, and I'll be talking about that later on in the agenda. And that's all that I've got. Thank you.
Really quickly to clarify too, those would normally be study sessions, so we'll keep our business moving for the month. And when you say extra, we only have so many Mondays. So I think what you're saying is we would probably just meet regularly through September.
That's fair to say, yes.
I do not want extra meetings other than Mondays.
All right. Good clarification. Thank you.
So with that, we'll now look to Sarah Lutz for our city clerk announcements, please.
Continuing on the theme of meetings, meetings scheduled for this week are, the Planning Commission will meet Tuesday, August 5th at 6:00 PM here in the chambers. Hickory Hills Advisory Committee will have a special meeting on Wednesday, August 6th at 9:00 AM in the training room. The Joint Rec Authority will meet Wednesday, August 6th at 7:00 PM at the Botanic Garden Visitor Center on the second floor. The Coast Guard City Committee will meet Thursday, August 7th at 11:30 at the air station. The Riparian Buffer Committee will meet Thursday, August 7th at 1:00 PM in the chambers. And the Parks and Rec Commission will meet Thursday, August 7th at 6:30 PM in the chambers. And of course, we're always looking for volunteers to sign up for our boards and committees. We have an opening on the Local Officers Compensation Committee.
Fantastic. Thank you. And we'll let you keep going with the consent calendar, please.
Right, stellar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for individual consideration by the commission. And such requests will be automatically respected. If an item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. One, consideration of approving the minutes of July 21st, 2025 meeting of the city commission. Two, consideration of clarifying the motion previously adopted authorizing the purchase order for parts for two tanks at the wastewater treatment plant with Amwell to specifically articulate the vendor, which is a housekeeping matter. Approval recommended. Three, consideration of authorizing a purchase order for unleaded gasoline for city operational use. Approval recommended. Four, consideration of authorizing a construction agreement for mid-block pedestrian crosswalk reconstruction on the 100 block of Cass Street. Approval recommended. Five, consideration of authorizing amendment to the construction agreement for the West Side Sewer Rehabilitation Project, which expands the project's scope within the previously approved dollar amount. Approval recommended. Six, consideration of authorizing the following items as recommended by the Traverse City Arts Commission. Approval of the Traverse City Mural Festival, including the expenditure from the Public Arts Trust Fund and authorizing the related agreements. Approval recommended. Seven, consideration of authorizing an agreement with Charter Township of Garfield for water pressure project at Grand Traverse Commons. Approval recommended. Eight, consideration of accepting an easement from Munson Medical Center for water pressure project at the Commons. Nine, consideration of declaring unclaimed property held by the Department of Public Services as surplus, so it may be auctioned for sale or recycled. Approval recommended. Ten, consideration of designating interim city manager Benjamin Marantet as the city's official voting delegate for the annual meeting of the Michigan Municipal League. Approval recommended. Eleven, consideration of adopting to make permanent traffic control order 726, which provides for parallel parking on the tree lawn of Lake Street. Approval recommended. Twelve, consideration of appointing city treasurer slash finance director as the employer delegate for the municipal employees' retirement system, MERS, annual conference. Approval recommended.
Okay, would any commissioner like any item pulled from the consent calendar? Heather?
Seven.
Okay. Any other? Tim?
Number four, please.
Number four. Any others? I know you just wanted to make a quick comment, Heather, so go ahead.
So I just want to make a comment on number 11, which is the traffic controller in Lake Street. We've received repeated appeals from residents about the speed, lack of speed control on that street. It's also, one of the crosswalks between Ninth and Lake is missing still. A couple of other crosswalks should go in there. This is definitely something that, you know, if we could just do something quick and easy to help control the speed. It's one of those streets where if you don't have any business on that street, you really don't need to be there. And it should, we should make it really safe for pedestrians and for the businesses there. So I look forward to seeing that complete street policy fixed up, and we can get to work on Lake Street.
Fantastic. All right. And now we'll open it to any member of the public. Would any member of the public like anything other than seven or four pulled from the consent calendar?
I would like four pulled.
Please, if you have anything other than seven and four, please come to the, if you want to talk about one of those two, please wait till the items are up. So.
So if there won't be public comments?
Yes. There's public comments at every motion, so, and every item on our agenda. Any public, for anything other than seven and four. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for a motion.
I move that the consent calendar be adopted as amended.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson.
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So we'll start with item number seven, and this was the authorizing Garfield Township water pressure, and that was pulled by you, Heather?
It was. I did send an email, and I apologize, it was kind of late today. We had nine-year-olds and 10-year-olds coming through the house. So there were unanswered questions on that document we received. So I just want to make sure that the document is okay, because there were questions on there and.
Oh, I see, in the margins. Okay, right, right.
Yes, those were addressed.
They were addressed.
Yes, they were.
Okay.
That was your main concern?
That was my concern, yes.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
I move that, oops, that was seven, I move that consideration of authorizing an agreement with Charter Township of Garfield for a water pressure project at the Grand Traverse Commons. Oh, that, I'm sorry, that's just the blah.
Yeah, that's just the agenda wording.
I move that the mayor and the interim city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement regarding the lease of the booster station and water service by township. We're missing a lot of articles there. To portion of city with such agreement subject to approval as to substance by the interim city manager and as to form by the city attorney.
Support.
Thank you for that, Charles. Thank you for that. Thank you for editing on the spot there, Commissioner Shaw. Any other comments from commissioners on this?
This is something that's been long overdue, and I'm glad that we've come to enough agreements to move forward on this. Hopefully, we don't have a fire break out at the St. Mark Barnes before we're able to suppress it.
Don't jinx it. All right. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we'll go to item, sorry, I'm not used to this on my laptop, so bear with me for a second here. We'll go to item four, and Commissioner Werner, you had this pulled?
Yes, thank you. And it actually relates to the comments the city manager was making about wheelchair in downtown, is if we're investing as a community in this crosswalk, and I know it's listed just as repair, but why not go a little bit farther and do it really well for pedestrian safety? And by that, I think we could have bump outs on either side, so pedestrians are more visible to people driving, and vice versa. I mean, that's, if we really want to address pedestrian safety, we need pedestrians to be able to see, and drivers to be able to see the pedestrians, and that's achieved with bump outs. I know in an email exchange, reason for not doing that is the potential future bicycle lanes. And as a cyclist, I support cycle lanes in general, but I would bet a dollar that in the next decade, there will not be cycle lanes on Cass Street on this block. So I'd rather, while we're making this investment, do real bump outs. And even the Pine Street crosswalk that was referenced as far as the at-grade facilities here, that has a partial bump out on both the east and west sides for pedestrians. But here, make it come out as far as possible. And then if that's done, it actually provides for additional parking on the east side. There's a spot there right now that's parking not allowed. It could fit two small cars or one very large car, but parking's not allowed in trying to make it so that pedestrians can see vehicles coming. But you do the bump out, and we could achieve several things here. Again, maybe it costs a little bit more money, but if we're already, as a community, spending $100,000, maybe we spend $110,000 and actually do it well. That's all.
And if I may just respond, I'll just share that certainly, I'll just mention what was in my email, is that these, this particular fix, and I know Commissioner Werner, you referenced that it's a repair maintenance sort of thing, that's really been sort of the aim of some of these TIF $97 dollars, is to prioritize based on fixes. I totally respect that if the commission wants something more than just a fix, and that's what you're expressing. And if that's the will of the city commission, I will work with the staff to come up with a cost estimate and bring that back to the city commission. That's certainly an option that you have available.
Go ahead, Mitch.
Yes, I think that we're doing a repair, and that's good. It's helpful to see opportunities to improve, but I would question the practicality of essentially adjusting this proposal right here. While it might seem superficially reasonable to have a bump out commensurate with our mid-block crossings in the downtown area, I don't know how this, that would impact, say, snow clearing operations that are contracted with a separate firm, not done with the city. So I don't know if Frank would be able to speak to the practicality of snow clearing or other operations here.
I think that if it's the will of the commission to look at bump outs, that we'll bring that kind of information back to you formally.
In the meantime, I don't believe we have a motion. Does anybody want to make the motion? Please let, I'll let you know when there's public comment. Please.
Have we decided if it's the will of the?
Well, that's where, if we either get a motion or.
Make a motion and see if.
Somebody can make amended one, yeah. Go ahead, Mitch, you were gonna make one?
No.
Sorry. Were you making one, Mitch? You were saying?
No, I wasn't making one right then.
So then, if that is the, is that where we have a majority of the commission now, then would like to see what the cost would be for this to become a mid-block bump out?
Yes.
I would also like to know how that would change the scope of this project right now that is supposed to be done this year. Is that something that the crew could still do and have engineered and ready to go in the time period that it's already going to be allotted for? Would this move a DDA-funded project to a different budget calendar year? And that would also impact where that money might come from?
So does the city commission want to move forward with this at this point, or do you just want us to bring something back to you?
Well, we don't have a motion, so that seems to be the consensus, that we'd like that information.
Okay. And is there anything you want to share at this point?
Excuse me, I'm gonna, us, us as in the commission, or us as in the public?
I was turning to the city engineer to ask her if there's anything she wanted to add to the conversation. She's saying no, she's good. Thank you.
Good, good, good. Great. So Mitch, go ahead.
Yeah, since we're not making a motion apparently tonight, I would be interested in seeing, since this is budgeted out of a specific fund through the DDA, and we might be asking for a larger scope of work that would have a larger amount, I wouldn't be opposed to, say, the access coming out of the Streets Department fund, but I'd have to know what the numbers actually look like, and how it factors into the DDA's already allocated budget for TIF 97.
I think we have to be clear, clear that this is what the DDA has budgeted and allotted. If we, as a commissioner, are asking for more, that has to come out of our money.
Exactly.
Pretty much. I mean, we could open that dialogue up with the DDA, but it's us saying, there's a body that decides it. It's us saying that we want it. That body controls those funds. We control our own funds. And at the end, everything comes together. So I have faith in staff being able to work on that if that's the way we go, but I don't think it's an assumption that that would all come out of TIF 97 money either, though. So, though we normally would have a motion, wait for a motion, because this was pulled and there is interest, and I will try to remember to this, although without the motion, sometimes I forget, I will allow for public comment on this item if somebody would like to make public comment on the item of the mid-block crossings.
And I'm going to read the public comment rules. We ask that you state your name and address, indicate if you are a city resident, non-city resident, and/or city business owner. We have a three-minute time allotment per speaker. When your time has elapsed, the timer will beep. And finally, we request that all language be respectful to all parties.
Thank you. Richard Robbins, resident of Traverse City at 720 Cent Place. I'm here representing the Grand Traverse Safe Streets Alliance. I appreciate the fact that you're pausing on this. There's a couple of key things we've asked of the DDA as the alliance is, we're looking for a clearer, long-term approach for pedestrian, cycle, and disabled access and thruway through the downtown area. And we don't have that currently. And when you look at major metropolitan areas, or even minor, like Ann Arbor and/or Holland, they have very robust downtown access. And so the ability to provide enhanced access by not just repairing these types of facilities, but looking at it as an overall approach to enhance pedestrian, disabled, as well as cycling access is very important. I will say that from our perspective, really, the idea of a bicycle lane down there is probably not what is going to facilitate robust access. It's really more from Grandview Parkway into the city, as well as potentially Front and State Street, which are whole different issues that we'll have to address. So I appreciate, we appreciate you putting a pause on this and having us kind of come, having engineering and others come back to you with a recommendation. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment on this item?
Justin Reed, 630 Cady Drive, apartment 1B. I think the brick pavers are not the way to go. Many of the crosswalks in downtown with the brick pavers are just falling apart. So I would very much like to see something without the brick pavers. Brick pavers are nice, they're cool, and everything else. But if you have those, you can't maintain those, and that's going to be a problem and issue, and it might be a higher maintenance cost to having those. So, in fact, we also have the TART trail that goes along Grandview Parkway. Doesn't mean that can't be improved, but it's there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, since there is no motion, there's no action to be taken, so we will now move on to old business. And that is, starting with a public hearing, and I yet again do not have a gavel. I need to remember that one of these days. But.
I need to grab it.
No, we don't need to go grab one, thank you. And hold tight for a second, my screen is loading here. But this is on the 1032 Woodmere Avenue, Tim Williams project. And we did have a presentation on this a couple of weeks ago at our meeting. And so mine is taking forever to load.
What do you want? Do you need mine?
Yeah, sorry, give us one. Well, I'll let Sean go ahead. He'll buy me some time.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and just give a brief overview. Good evening, Sean, Winter City Planning Director. So this PUD is the redevelopment of a former industrial site at 1032 Woodmere Avenue. The applicant proposes a mixed-use development consisting of four buildings on a single foundation. This othermost building with the largest footprint will be a multi-tenant commercial building with an active outdoor retailer and likely a food and beverage tenant. The building, this particular building is in the airport approach zone. It's limited, therefore, in its height and its uses. It is proposed to be two to three stories, but the final design will be influenced by the approach zone regulations, which the airport regulates in feet, not stories, so we're kind of working to reconcile that. The three remaining buildings are scheduled to be market rate residential at three stories. However, I just want to point out, they would be entitled by right to build up to four. They were asked that at the planning commission. They're still working through their own internal pro forma on that. Parking for the development will primarily be underground. That single foundation will serve as underground parking for the whole development at a rate of approximately 64 spaces. The project also provides a number of public improvements. They intend to construct a non-motorized trail connection from the west end of Carver Street through the city-owned property to the west of them, down to the Boardman Lake Loop. This will provide direct access to the non-motorized loop and the broader trail network for residents in Traverse Heights, when coupled with the bike lanes that are being installed on Carver later this year. In addition, they plan to pave Sheffer Street, the portion along their property, which is one of the few remaining gravel streets we have left in the city. And they will also be including on-street parking for the public in that location at a rate of 31 spaces. So all told, about 95 parking spaces will be provided along that site and corridor. They'll also be installing the sidewalk necessary on the north side of Carver, which is the portion along their property line, which would connect up to the intersection with Woodmere Avenue. So the project has been through a number of iterations, through feedback provided by the Planning Commission, and the city's internal collaborative review process, which is the design team. At some of those meetings, as I mentioned, last month, we did invite the Grand Traverse County Construction Code Office to be part of the discussions, as well as the Northwest Regional Airport Authority. It was determined to be consistent with the master plan. Specifically, this is one of the four identified priority redevelopment sites called out in the plan. The Planning Commission held the required public hearing June 17th, 2025. We didn't have anyone speak for or against the project at that meeting. After their deliberation, the Planning Commission voted eight to zero to recommend approval. There was one absence that night. And in your packet this time is the order granting, which calls out the agreements that would need to be put in place. I had the chance to sit with the city attorney and work through some of those. If this is approved, it also includes the finding of facts and the conditions that were recommended through their motion at the Planning Commission level. So I'm happy to have, to be available for any questions. I know the applicant, I think, is queued up to provide a presentation.
What we're going to do first, because this is a public hearing, is open the public hearing, and I think I'm going to have the public speak first, and then we'll go to the recommended motion and action after, so that we can have public input ahead of that. And then we'll be ready to, if we need questions of you or Tim after that, if that's okay?
Fine with me.
Great.
Thanks.
So with that, we will go ahead, and I will now go ahead without my gavel and yet another trusty water bottle, and open up the public hearing for this, and then Sarah will go over the rules. You have those correct?
Working on it.
All right. We're having slow internet connection today, I believe, so we're all taking just an extra moment. All right. With that, I now open the public hearing.
Okay, and we're going to, the mayor has opened the public hearing, and so we're going to ask for any comments first from individuals who have any interest in property within 300 feet of the property that is subject of this public hearing. Going once, going twice, they're all rushing up to the mic. And so secondly, we will take public comment from any other individuals wishing to address.
Richard Robbins, resident Traverse City, representing the Grand Traverse Safe Streets Alliance again. I've had an opportunity to review, we have, actually, the alliance has, in one of our working sessions, review the proposed development that's going in at that point. And we are very enthusiastic about this. What it provides, and the applicant is providing, is both a robust access for multimodal access down to the Boardman Loop Trail, as well as handicapped and pedestrian access that's separate, so that what we can now do as a city is start to envision, as the Grand Traverse Safe Streets Alliance is focused on, two east-west and four north-south protected and/or delineated, safe transportation corridors for our citizens to bike, to walk, to run, and to use in a disabled fashion. It is going to be attached to or close across the street from the upcoming paving and buffered bike lane on Carver Street between Garfield and Woodmere, which is very exciting, because what it provides is the Traverse Heights residents the opportunity to have a safe corridor to come to, and then take that corridor down to the Boardman Loop Trail. We're working with city and TART around making that Boardman Loop Trail more robust on the north side. As you come up on the other side, you come to 12th Street. And so we have, and 12th Street's a wonderful path, all the way over to Division. We're working with MDOT around the idea of another innovative approach there. But then, once you get across there, you're to the Montessori School, and you're up to the YMCA. So we're getting there, guys. We're really making some great progress as a community on creating safe delineated transportation corridors. And this is one of those links. And the applicant is very pro multimodal access, and he's demonstrated that time and time again in the community. So I just wanted to make sure that from the working group, this just isn't the Richard Robbins show here. It is actually the working group of our eight not-for-profits, which many of you already know. We're all in full agreement, this is a great project. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment for this public hearing? Once? All right. Well, then I'm going to use my unofficial official gavel here and close the public hearing. And now we will take this back to the city commission level. We have a motion, but we can also have questions. I know we did have a presentation from Mr. Pulliam at a previous meeting. Did you want to come up and address and speak to anything, Tim?
Hello, Tim Pulliam, 516 West 11th. Yeah, I'm the Woodmere Development person. I'm here to answer any questions, and I just appreciate all the time all city staff has put into this with us. It's been, I mean, it seems like it's taken a long time, but really, every step of the way, there were important things that we got figured out. All the departments worked together. I mean, it's a good process. It's nice. We don't see many PUDs in the city. I don't think there's many pieces of property left where we're going to be able I don't think there's many pieces of property left where we're going to be able to do those, but there are a couple, and hopefully, this process can act as a model for the few that are left open out there. Any questions?
Any questions from commissioners, or did you have a question? Go ahead, Jackie.
I have a question, but I don't think it's for Tim. It's actually, I think, for our city attorney. Is this the time for that?
Yep, yep. Sorry, any questions at large, I should have been clear. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sensitive to the fact that the land that the trail connector will be built upon is city-owned property, I think designated parkland, and it just occurred to me that we're in sort of a public-private partnership situation, and if there's a private improvement built upon city-owned parkland, where does that leave us in terms of our deed restrictions on parkland?
Right, important question. None of the elements that are going to be built on the city's property are going to be private. They'll be funded privately. We'll do a permit for them to be constructed on the city's property, and then they will be publicly owned and available to the public. So, just instead of the city contracting and building those things itself, Mr. Pulliam's going to do that for us, and then those will all belong to the city.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, a mark.
But this is similar to like another park that we dealt with, and just to keep in mind that at some point, the city will be responsible for improving, maintaining what's there.
Absolutely. Do you have a question or a comment? Because if we don't get into habits, we'll do a motion, but if you have a question, go ahead.
I'll wait for the question.
Okay.
The motion?
Yeah.
My questions were answered the last time around, and I'm really happy to make this recommendation that the order granting planned unit development number 25-PUD-01 to redevelop 1032 Woodmere into a mixed-use development consisting of four buildings, three for residential purposes and one for commercial purposes, with underground parking, a new non-motorized connection to the Boardman Lake Loop Trail, and the paving of a portion of Sheffer Street with public on-street parking as requested by Tim Pulliam as recommended by the city planning commission be adopted.
Support.
All right, thank you, Mayor Proton, and thank you for that lift on that, reading that motion, Commissioner Shaw. You did great. Okay, now, any general comment or questions? Go ahead, Tim.
Just a question. I think I know the answer is no, but the city attorney, Sheffer Street and that what I consider kind of a crazy property line between the woodshop property and the city property, you know, it's that curvature that comes across the street. Was anything cleaned up as far as the right-of-way, the property, like any of that, or is it just, it is what it is?
No, those are some of the things that we will clean up as a part of this, and that's why there's sort of a catch-all for any documents necessary. If we need to have an easement across the one corner from Mr. Pulliam to make Sheffer Street work and so forth, and I think we talked about moving the dumpster around so we can figure that out.
Yeah, I just didn't know, like, maybe the right-of-way is actually, follows the curvature, but over time, the street just became straight or something, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, then I will open up any public comments on the motion itself. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, looking forward to that. As a 12-year resident of the Woodmere Corridor and had worked there until recently for 18 years, it's really exciting to see something going so exciting like that. So, thank you for that. All right, and catching up on mine, we're now going to item number two, which is the West Front Street Safety Improvements, and I'll let you lead with that, Benjamin.
Yes, thank you. So this is an agreement to actually make improvements to West Front Street, and this is a result of engineering work that was done by the firm that the city hired, the engineering firm, which was Hubble, Roth, and Clark. And we do have representatives of Hubble, Roth, and Clark available virtually if there are traffic engineering-related questions. We also have city engineer Anne Pagano here if there are questions for her, and I'm happy to also assist with questions if there are any. And with that, I'll return it back to you, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have any questions on this item? Or a motion? Go ahead, Heather.
Our engineer maybe wants to speak to my concern about removing those planters and the possibility of putting something there so that drivers aren't startled by the lack of something there, and then all of a sudden start speeding through there because they think they can. So, Anne, our engineer had a good solution for that.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Shaw, Anne Pagano, city engineer. As we discussed, we can install some flexible delineators there, so those would, you know, mark where the median is and help with safety.
Yeah, the Arts Commission has been tasked, well, I did it myself, so it's my fault, with putting something in there. It's very restricted what we can do, but we're really busy with the film, the mural festival right now, we just haven't gotten to the actual RFPing or anything, but we will. Thank you.
I was going to say, I thought that was part of the original motion. That's great. Any other questions, or would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that the mayor and interim city clerk be authorized to execute a contract with J. Rank in the amount not to exceed $112,392.56, which includes a 15% contingency for West Front Street Safety Improvements, such contract subject as to its substance by the interim city manager and its form by the city attorney, with funds available in the Capital Projects Fund 499.
Support.
Thank you, Commissioners Treadley, wow, Stanley and Treadwell, sorry, guys. That's where we're at right now. All right, any comments from the commission? Go ahead, Jackie.
I just wanted to explain, I'm going to be voting against this, and my concern really has to do with a disconnect between the incident that precipitated this conversation and discussion and the solution that we've found. As I recall from our prior presentations, the off-the-road accident was actually an inebriated driver traveling uphill westbound, and that this guardrail solution is designed primarily to prevent crossover accidents going downhill and eastbound. From the original Hubble, Roth, and Clark presentation, it seemed that the most cost-effective solutions involved things like lighting and signage, and I am much more interested in pursuing those solutions that might address traffic in both directions more effectively and at lower cost, so I'll be voting against the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
I just wanted to respectfully ask, and you can certainly say no, we do have representatives of Hubble, Roth, and Clark available virtually if you want them to respond, or we can forego that.
I based my comments on their written report, so I'm satisfied with the facts as they stand. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission at this time? Seeing none, any public comment on this item at this time?
Justin Reed, 630 Cazee Drive, resident. In the packet, I've seen that there's signage that's already there, there's quite a few signs that are there. So, there's that, then there's also, I believe there's some lighting elements to this too. So, I don't think you can get much more than that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Any other public comment at this time? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Treadwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Werner?
No.
Commissioner, or Mayor Proton Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Motion passes. And with that, we will move on to our item number three, and that is the consideration of the services agreement with Grace Episcopal Church. We had a presentation on this at our last meeting, so this is being brought to us with kind of the consensus of the commission with the complete 102,000 and change balance request. We did talk about this a little bit of, in the context of a couple of different options. So I'm going to hand it over to you, Mr. Mayor, if you want to kick this off.
Yes, thank you. So, the city commission, as the mayor mentioned, discussed at your July 21st meeting, bringing back an agreement that would provide the funding that Grace Episcopal Church has indicated is necessary to carry the Jubilee House through the end of this calendar year, that dollar amount equals $102,256. I just want to share, of course, that we sincerely appreciate the valuable service that is provided there. I do strongly believe that ongoing discussion is necessary to evaluate the city's financial participation and the continued support of this service. So, I'm hoping for some direction from the commission in that regard tonight, sort of even just generally speaking, but that's my recommendation, is that we take a close look at that. And also, later on in the agenda, you will hear that I recommend strongly that the city engage, and this is related to this, in long-range budget forecasting, so that we have a two-to-three year look into our future. I've worked with our treasurer's office already to start that process, and that's so that the commission and the public can be eyes wide open with what our future financial situation looks like, and it's also more fair to the folks administering this service so they have an idea as far as what to potentially expect. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I just wanted to get that out there. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from commissioners or a motion? Uller. Thank you, Heather.
Okay, this is a rock and a hard place, as far as I'm concerned. There's, while Safe Harbor continues to operate as a nighttime shelter, only we, I feel like we have no choice but to fund the daytime shelters. Otherwise, we're just pushing the problem further out into the neighborhoods and the surrounding businesses, and we need a 24/7 shelter with eight attached services and adequate permanent supportive housing to deal with this problem effectively, and with dignity, because it's indignant to have to pick up all your belongings and go roaming around, and the roaming homelessness is no answer to getting people back on their feet or to the kind of stability that you need to even be able to accept mental health or addiction services. I feel we really need a coordinated plan from the task force, and we need support from the QRT and from Safe Harbor and from Rotary Charities as well, which is heavily involved in all of this. I'm wondering about a compromise here of possibly providing the $61,000 ask to get them through October, and to see if they can get the funding from the county and those other organizations that they were looking at. They can always come back in October, but maybe that's a start to get some help with that fundraising. There's any support here for that?
If I can just say that, I just asked about this before the meeting, the wording is not to exceed, because if any of that grant money comes in, or any of those are awarded, then we would not give the full amount, we would reduce what was ever granted from the funding that would have been provided by outside sources. So that would save us from bringing it back in a couple of months, but it would also mean that if other funding was found, that would take some of that off the city's ultimate bottom line, so.
Okay, well, so you get the whole cookie, but if you find somebody to put some chips in there, then...
Exactly. So, do we have other questions or a motion? Go ahead, Jackie.
This is not a question, it's a comment.
No, I'm going to ask, because if we're going to just sit and talk about it, and it's not leading to a motion...
I'll make the motion...
Thank you.
...that the mayor and interim city clerk be authorized to execute an agreement with Grace Episcopal Church of Traverse City in an amount not to exceed $102,256 for day shelter services provided at Jubilee House, with such agreement subject to approval as to its substance by the interim city manager and its form by the city attorney, with funds to come from the general fund balance, and further that the city commission authorizes a budget adjustment to utilize the general fund balance.
Support.
Thank you, Commissioners Stanley and Treadwell. And I did want to add on to, since there is the discussion of this amount, that if this does go forward, A, yes, if there's any funding found, that will then offset the $102,256. So I want to make that clear, and also that with the forecasting budget and other things, I don't personally see this as a recurring cost for us. It's something that's happened as we've been reexamining and doing other things. Other commissions will make that decision, because this is the budget right now, but there's already talk amongst partners with the task force about how to handle this and other services, places with service that might be able to help relieve some of the stress. This is all a work in progress, and so while people have kind of said that we are, we've determined that this is what we're going to do, and we're just going to keep putting money into it, we've determined that we're going to move forward from just having the pines, and what that looks like and how we fund it, I think it will be an evolving process. So, Commissioner Shaw, your concerns are very valid about, you know, where the funding is coming from and what we're doing with it, and I think we can try to move this resolution towards that for right now, if not it being a permanent check. Commissioner Anderson, did you have?
Well, I am supporting comments from Commissioner Shaw. I see this as potentially the first of a series of funding initiatives, which makes me want to have more context around the operating and funding plan for a day shelter, how it fits within the rest of our homelessness initiatives, and I am sensitive to having received a number of comments from the community with concerns about the need for, just the way the operation at Jubilee House has shifted from a volunteer base to a hired employment base. So, there are some specifics within the proposal here that I could see improvements made. You know, an annual audit and report, I think, could be made more frequent. I think that we could ask for information on the number of unique clients who are being served and how they're being served. I think we might specify that city contributions go specifically toward services and supplies and not funding of employees. So there would be some things that would help me to get on board with this, but without a clear understanding and agreement from everyone here that we are, this is a one-time grant, and that we're monitoring the results of that grant, just as any other grant-making organization would. I'm struggling with it.
Do we have, well, real quick, do we have any other comments? I would invite if any, I know we had a presentation from Grace Episcopal last time, but if, as any of these issues are raised, if anybody from the organization would like to come up and address, please feel free, but also, other commissioners, if you have other comments or questions, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, at the previous meeting where this was a topic, I inquired about, or this meeting, if we as a commission could have information on how this request and possible action fits into the bigger picture, addressing housing and homelessness, and with the transition at the city manager position, we've not had that information provided, so what I'm looking for, all right, what I'm looking for during public comment is anything that you might have that helps me understand how this fits into the big picture of addressing homelessness. Why this expenditure specifically?
One thing, just to share, and I was given this just before the meeting, just in terms of financial information, is that of the roughly 1.7, 1.17 million that the city has spent on different homelessness efforts, about 10% is what has been allocated to Jubilee House. I don't know if that speaks directly at all to what you're after, but just in terms of financial information.
Can you give the window on that, too? I'm just looking at our notes and see that.
Going back to 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and to a degree, actually, 2019, when we, if you wanted to... Well, and to a degree, actually, 2019, when we, if you wanted to fold on the community policing officer into that.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, certainly, dollar amounts are part of that, but also just...
Yeah.
The logistics, and that sounds crude and inhuman, but just what we're trying to achieve, and how this helps us as a community achieve that.
I don't think that's crude at all. It's something we should be looking at, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Derek Even, patient, you can go ahead.
Sure, actually. Thank you. Derek Quinn, resident of Traverse City, and also the coordinator for outreach efforts at Grace Episcopal Church. We agree that this is not a sustainable way to have a day shelter, and we are eager to continue to be a part of that conversation with you. We also recognize that we can't continue to do what we're doing the way that we're doing without, without help from partners, and that's why we've approached you for this. So, as we said in our presentation, we hope that this is a runway that gives us the leeway that we need to figure out what this ministry is going to look like, and what Traverse City's care of the homeless is going to look like in the years to come. I will say, as I said in my presentation, we have applied to many grants, and we are hopeful that we will get many of them. But of course, that's out of our hands. That's our granting partners. And so, all we can do is ask all of you and all of them for your support, and continue to work with everyone until we make this possible and happen. But we, of course, want to continue to work with you. If you want more reports, if you want different things in the reports, we're happy to collect that data and provide that to you. Just tell us what you're looking for, and we will do our best to provide that any way that we can.
Thank you. I guess I would ask, as for clarification, as we have this offer from Commissioner Anderson, audit, as I know, you well know, is a very specific financial action versus a review of books or a review of a budget. Is that more what you're looking for, or do you want an actual full audit every, for this period duration?
You know, I used audit because it's a term that's in the agreement that was attached in our packet. So, I would be open to other ways of monitoring use of the funds.
Just some funds balance checks and balances kind of thing? Is that what you're really looking for? Yeah, okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Do we have other questions or comments from Commissioners? I think the one thing that I would say that Commissioner Warner seemed, and I might be not correctly summarizing this, of what does this purpose does this serve in the, if you will say, continuum of care of the housing, our neighbors experiencing homelessness, that this is where people go during the day to have, right now, have use of facilities, restrooms, other things. So, if maybe you could describe a little bit of what that service is that you provide right now.
Sure. So, at this point, we have three agencies providing the care of the unhoused throughout the day. Breakfast is served at San United Methodist, then Jubilee House is open from when breakfast closes until Safe Harbor opens. Safe Harbor functions as the overnight shelter. So, if Jubilee House weren't there, and there weren't any other option, there would be nowhere to go from after breakfast until dinnertime, basically. And there'd be nowhere during those hours to get a shower, to do a load of laundry, to get access to a bus pass if you needed to get to an appointment. We're one of the only agencies open during that time who is ready to accept all of those who come and are in need of those kinds of services, and also just to have a place to hang out that isn't in businesses, or neighborhoods, or anywhere else, but a safe environment where everyone knows that they can come, find a little peace, find a place to relax, and find a place to be with their community.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
Just one more concern, that if this funding will help with any type of supervision outside of the facilities, because that's been one of the bigger complaints from neighbors.
Yes. So, our staff is tasked with, and volunteers are tasked with, in addition to taking care of the inside of the house, of doing regular rounds in the outside area of the house, including in the smoking area, the picnic table area, and the parking lot beside. Now, obviously, the focus is on the inside of the building, and we don't have someone posted outside, but we do do regular rounds to make sure that we have that area as under control as possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I want to hear what the public has to say.
Well, that would be the next step, so thank you. All right, with that, we will then open it up for public comment. Any public comment on this item? And if, can I get a show of hands of just who's interested in making public comment on this? If you wouldn't mind, please come to the podium, but start lining up, so that we're not having to have everybody kind of start their walk after each speaker. And our kindly chief will help organize everybody, so don't worry about that. Just feel free to approach.
And I just want to add, too, that for those giving comment tonight, that we just ask that you use language that's respectful, and that there be no reaction whatsoever from the audience on comments made. We want an atmosphere where everyone feels comfortable sharing their opinion. Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Justin Reed, Traverse City, Michigan resident. So, on the comments earlier about Jubilee House and the homelessness, and also the Safe Harbor issue, is the geography and also the real estate limit on what they can do. They'll try their best to go ahead and do these programs. But, you know, with the, with the mental health component, as you've heard, Norlakes Community Mental Health has a $9 million shortfall. And so, with the shrinking budget that Norlakes has, is that is going to cause more issues and more people to lose their services. And so, programs like Jubilee House and the Safe Harbor are the kind of the guardrail into community services. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Darcy Pickren. I'm a former city resident, 27 years in central neighborhood, and I now reside in Peninsula Township. I'm here to make a public comment about the proposed $102,256 allocation to Jubilee House from the city's general fund to stay open. I share your commitment to addressing homelessness, but I have concerns about this funding approach, which includes a four-page agreement and Exhibit A, which appears only to address things as they currently are at Jubilee House. At an additional $25,500 per month till the end of December, what is this large amount of taxpayer funds being spent on? This raises sustainability questions, which we talked about already. I recognize homelessness often involves complex challenges, including mental health issues, disability, and trauma that require comprehensive collaboration. Currently, I do not know if they provide any specific programming to these folks. Many would certainly benefit from programs that restore dignity and build character rather than dependency. I support skill-based programs that build independence. We do that in the agency that I work with. Many partner organizations and agencies in Traverse City operate without direct city funding, relying instead on private donations, grants, and fundraising. Providing operational support to one organization may set a precedent that strains city resources and raises equity questions about which organizations receive taxpayer support. I recommend, number one, encourage self-sufficiency programs that empower individuals to develop skills and achieve independence. Two, consider partnership models where the city provides expertise or coordination rather than direct funding. Three, explore grant opportunities and provide funding sources that may be more appropriate for ongoing operational costs. And four, evaluate long-term impact and sustainability before committing taxpayer funds. I believe our community's compassion is best expressed through solutions that restore dignity and create lasting change. I work with these people every day. I'm at Jubilee House. I'm in Safe Harbor. I've been in the pines for two years. And I would just urge you to carefully consider whether this funding request aligns with responsible stewardship of public resources. We can show compassion while being responsible stewards of taxpayer money. Let's invest in solutions that restore dignity and create lasting change, not dependency. And I thank you for your consideration of these concerns. It's important. I care about these people very, very much, and I'm with them on a daily basis. So, we need programs, not more people. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Lane Smith Corbin. I live at 323 Washington Street in Traverse City. My house is immediately next door, and less than 10 feet away from Jubilee House. Derek Quinn of Grace Episcopal Church and Jubilee House relayed to the City Commission at your last meeting that the neighbors are happier, since Jubilee House now has more employees and volunteers. This is not correct, at least in my case. I'm not happy with Jubilee House at all. There are too many people in the building and around the property. There is too much noise and smoke. The actions of many of the guests is unpredictable. In 1991, I moved into my house, which was next door to a rectory and a church, never anticipating the rectory would turn into anything other than that. Yes, things change, and that house has served a number of purposes: a law office, a rental property, stopping point for refugees from Hurricane Katrina. Those sorts of changes stretch the limits a bit, but overall, not much concern, not much reason for concern. Kind and thoughtful people don't allow so many guests to come and go from 10:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., five days a week, allowing those people to step into the front and backyards to smoke tobacco and marijuana. Do you know that marijuana smells like skunk? This is what my air frequently smells like every day. The guests stand around in the alley behind my garage, urinate against my neighbor's garage, lie about under the trees in the front and back of Jubilee House, leave cigarette butts, and sometimes trash in their yard and mine. The property is monitored by cameras, which are not viewed on the weekends, because they are located inside Jubilee House, which is closed on Saturday and Sunday. The guests are informed by signs to not stay around Jubilee House when it is closed. They either don't read the signs or ignore them, because there are people behind Jubilee House much of the time, day, night, weekends. I don't call the police, as I have been frequently told to do, unless there appears to be a problem, such as inappropriate, loud, threatening, abusive language, which I hear quite well. I do expect the guests to be there on Sunday after church services, because Grace Episcopal serves lunch to anyone, but the guests are supposed to leave after that event. Yesterday, Sunday, there were people coming and going there all day, front and back of Jubilee House, as well as the church, of course. And Saturday, as I was moving the sprinkler around my backyard in 30-minute intervals, going into my house in between, between the air, in between, because the air was so bad, I heard a number of people over there, different voices at different times, just chatting mainly. But about 4:30, I heard a woman's voice singing way off...
Thank you for your comments.
Offensive, yes, but when I came down...
Thank you for your comments. Your time has elapsed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Megan Wick. I live at 436 Washington Street, a Traverse City resident. Jubilee House is making an urgent request for funding to continue operations through end of 2025. Their work is vital, and I fully support their mission. At the same time, this moment highlights the need for a more comprehensive and sustainable plan. Our community can't continue to rely on year-to-year stopgaps. We need to move toward a 24/7 collaborative shelter model that offers stability and wraparound services at one location, just as the Community Cares Coalition has proposed. In March, the Community Cares Coalition signed a memorandum of understanding of this year with Safe Harbor and Jubilee House to explore the concept of a 24/7 shelter with wraparound services, with the understanding that Safe Harbor would be acting as an advisor. That work is underway, and these three organizations are also participating in the task force. So, I just want to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
I assume that you all know me by now. I'm Audrey Willett. I'm currently homeless. I'm here to speak for my community. My community is suffering. We were removed from the pines. And you know what I saw that day? I saw people working for the community high-fiving each other, like it was, "Good job. We finally got the problem out of the pines." Well, we're still here. I'm still here, and we are suffering. I was told by the chief of police that everyone had a place to go. Guess what? No, they don't. I don't have a place to go. Yeah, I'm lucky to have a van, but who knows what's going to happen tomorrow? There are still people sleeping on the streets behind the library. You thought this problem was going to go away? The problem hasn't gone away. And my anger is just, it's abound, because I feel betrayed by you guys. I came here, and I believed in you, and now I don't believe in you at all. Bye. I'm here to speak for my community. The only love that I've ever seen is places like Jubilee. When I was hungry, they gave me food. When I needed a pair of pants for an interview, the lady here, right there, she gave me a pair of pants with flowers on them, and she always asked me about those flowers on those pants. She gave me sunshine when my life was dark. What, what, what the hell? We're still out here, and we're still human, and we are still suffering. Clearly, we're still suffering, and we're not getting what we need after what happened at Walmart. And all I can think about is my little community at Walmart. Where are we going to go if the chief of police or anyone else decides that we no longer belong there, because of what happened? I'm worried about my safety. I'm worried about everyone else's safety, but I'm also worried about my safety and my community's safety. And when I say that out loud, I get told I'm disgusting. Well, good, I'm disgusting. But I'm here to speak for my community, and I'm tired. I am so freaking tired.
Thank you, Audrey.
My name is Brenda Quick. I live at 542 Fifth Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of Jubilee House. Yes, I agree that the ideal situation would be if we had some means in one location where people could get care all year, all day, and all year round that they need. But the reality is, that isn't the case. As was explained by Father Derek, from breakfast in the morning until dinner at night, a lot of these folks have no place to go, and they have needs, and we can help accomplish those needs, but we need your help very badly. I'll give you an example of what happened. We, once a month, our church feeds the homeless, and on Sunday afternoon. And I didn't make the count of how many we fed in July, but in June, we fed 91 people, 91 people. That's a lot of hungry people, folks, and we've got to help them. And a lot of these people, they are homeless, but they want their lives to be better, too. And we've helped people be in positions where they could interview for jobs, find jobs. As a result of that, salaries and places to live and so forth. And Jubilee House allows that. But you know what? If you don't have good clothes to wear when you interview, if you don't have clean bodies when you interview, if you don't have the things that we can help provide for them, then what are you going to do? What are you going to do? So, I do hope that at some point, we will be in a position where we will have one facility with all of the needs that these people desperately need, so that they can help turn their lives around and make things better and safer for them. But in the meantime, we're a critical arm of that help. So, please, please support us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brenda. We have one, I see someone approaching, so we'll give a moment here.
My name is Randy Parcher. I reside at, I recently moved since my significant other passed away two months ago, and they made me move to a smaller apartment, so take me a second. So, it's 4174 Spruce Wood Drive. I believe I'm a resident, though I am outside the city limits. I want to say that Jubilee House helps a lot, because they have computers, and a lot of our places that hire now, you put an app in, how? On a computer. If you have no computer access, you have no way to get a job. Also, they help people other than the homeless, because me and Lori, we've been housed for 10 years, before she passed away, at the place where we were at, and they would help. They have a hygiene pantry, so you can go in, you can get shampoo, you know, soap, just soap, detergent. And these things can help a lot if you're on such a tight budget that you can barely afford groceries, because between the two of us, we were only getting 100... So you can go in, you can get shampoo, you know, soap, just soap, detergent. And these things can help a lot if you're on such a tight budget that you can barely afford groceries, because between the two of us, we were only getting $120 in food stamps. Imagine that at these prices that we have now, and then still try to get other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And I hadn't heard about Lori. I'm so sorry to hear about that.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Westcott. I'm the director of Jubilee House. I started my work there in 2022 when the city agreed to double our hours. And it was my part-time position that was funded at that time, and my full-time position that is currently funded by part of this request. I would like to address your concern, Commissioner Anderson, about the switch from volunteer labor to paid labor. I think it's important to note that Jubilee House was founded by a retired couple who poured their entire life and soul into that wonderful ministry. They did so when the house was open for significantly fewer hours and significantly fewer days and saw significantly fewer people. When I came on, they left entirely, and I was the only part-time employee. They removed themselves from the ministry because the work became simply too intense for them. They were not prepared to deal with those sorts of intoxication and mental health issues that they were seeing. And now we are open significantly more. We do, of course, have fantastic volunteers that bring their own warmth to the house. But they are, they're here with us for four hours once a week. And so it's highly essential to have employees there on the ground to not only coordinate between those volunteer teams, but to know and love the people who come through the door. I, as a full-time employee, know the name of every single person who walks in there. I know their story. I know the things that they're working on, how life is working for them. I know what they need. I would very much like to invite each and every one of you to come and join me for even part of a day so that you can see the little connections that we make that add up to a very big difference and can transform lives all over the place. And I would be so very grateful for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Para. I'm the rector of Grace Episcopal Church, which means that I am blessed every day that Hannah and Derek work for me, as well as our vestry and lay leadership. I just want to say that I don't envy you, and I am very aware that we are asking for you to fund imperfection. I wish that, like Commissioner Shaw was saying, that we had wraparound services available in a facility that was logistically adequate to all the needs that are before us. And I promise that we will all participate wholeheartedly, as we have, in the task force and other opportunities in bringing such a time to existence and fruition. But I also invite you to come and look at how we spend our money. Anytime you want. We're pretty frugal. We are doing the best we can with what we have. And unfortunately, the question that is before us today is, do we have a day shelter in this part of the world? We would be happy to work with anyone else who wants to make it better, makes it, make it more integrated, make anything. But the reality is, at the moment, we're, we stand in the breach where others don't. And we ask for your help to do so because we can't do it without what we've asked for. It is exactly the amount that we need to make it to the end of the year. Not more. And so it is certainly my hope that you will join us in giving us a fighting chance, both to finish the end of the year and to do so in a way that then lets us seek out grants so we can try to get through one more calendar year. And the hope is, by the end of that, the task force will have borne fruit, that we will know how we will pay for wraparound services, that we will do better than we are right now. But in the meantime, we can't do it without you and what you have the power to do tonight. So thank you for your consideration, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Jan Cleveland, 211 West 12th Street. I've been a volunteer for almost three years at Jubilee House. The cost of what they're, the price of what they're hoping to get from you, I think, could cost the city even more if Jubilee wasn't there. Because what I see when I'm there and what these volunteers and the people who work there do, take a person, when we speak of mental health, they are listened to. We can see something that's escalating, that they could leave into the community and cause all kinds of things that seems to not happen. Because they're not just in a house. They're in a home. And if I could have five Jubilee Houses in Traverse City, it's a model that I have, it takes my breath away, what I've learned in three years and what is offered there. You can't, there are these intangibles. There's this hug. Or they walk in, and, and they hear their name. I remember I listened to, he was Captain Keith Gillis at one time. I listened to him. He was a brand-new, young officer, I believe, in Chicago. And because he was young and new, he said, "They made him work on Christmas Eve in freezing cold weather." And he came upon a man living in a box. And he took the time to be with that man, and that man said to him, and this really, this means a lot to me because I learned from that. He told Officer Gillis, "Do you know how many months it's been when I've ever heard anybody say my name?" They, just the saying of the name. And I'm not just saying for them. When they come in and say, "Hi, Jan," I immediately feel what they're feeling. But I watch it. I see these things that are priceless. And I do believe if, and I feel bad that what happens next door, but it'll happen in, it's happening. It will happen in other people's neighborhood. So maybe we're saving some of the people and that not happening in neighborhoods. I wish that wasn't like that for her. But I do know that during that time that I'm there, there is, there is Jesus and love, and, and it's this church that is amazing. 20 years, I think, Jubilee's House has been here. And all those years, I don't think they've asked for anything much. They didn't even, we didn't even hear about the homeless till about three or four years ago much. They just did it. So I'm begging you to keep them going and learn from that because it's a model that is, is unbelievable. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jan.
Hello. My name is David Clinton, Traverse City, Michigan, 4291 Stone Ridge Drive. I'm here today as a volunteer at Jubilee. I want to stress the importance of Jubilee House and what it means to our community. At 10:00 AM, we open the door on Washington Street, where people can come in, know they're welcome. They can settle down, have a coffee, and they know that they're loved and respected. Things get real busy very fast at Jubilee, with showers, laundry, dishes, donations, snacks, microwave food, computer time, clothing, pantry, and so forth. But as we all work together and listen together, we develop a sense of community where there is trust, respect, and dignity. It's within that community that one's value, talents, strength, and potential are surfaced. Working at Jubilee has made a difference in my life, and I feel that it makes a difference in their lives. So please continue support for Jubilee House. It's a lifeline for many people. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other folks in line. Are we missing anybody? I don't want to rush us. All right. I think that's our, the end of our line. I want to thank everybody who got up and spoke, no matter what they had to say, and everyone sharing their experiences. It's, we know we live in a community that cares, and every single person who spoke came up here and to say that, to express how they care about our community. So I thank everyone for participating in this discussion with us. So with that...
No, I just want to agree. And I think that the comments really point to the need for some, some real solutions, some actual options, and not the corner that we find ourselves in right now, and not another Band-Aid either. But in the meantime, I, I am going to support the only day shelter that we have in Traverse City.
Mitch?
As I've said before, I am probably still the only person behind this desk that has personally experienced homelessness. During that time, I never stayed in an overnight shelter. I never went into a day shelter. I recognize that my status was temporary, thankfully. But in part, that was because I was able to access resources in the surrounding area. I knew of a quiet office building that I could go into the bathroom and take essentially a shower in the sink at certain hours of the day when nobody was on that floor at all. The library on the university campus had a cafe with microwave ovens that are there for everybody, so I could heat up some food. I was quiet and kept to myself, but that was only possible because I was able to access facilities that we do not have in this community. Jubilee's House serves that place where somebody can take a shower, not just in a sink at an office building. They can use a microwave that they are free to use, not feeling like they're crowding out somebody else from the use of a cafe microwave. This is a facility that may not be seen as sustainable, might be seen as permanent. But we have put ourselves, as a community, and specifically as a city, in this position through, one, the growing homelessness issue, which is caused by, among other reasons, the high cost of living here, which, yes, we're trying to work on housing, but we can only do so much. But also, in transitioning from some people are in the pines, and Safe Harbor is a facility for overnight during the winter months, to nobody's living in the pines, and Safe Harbor is the only overnight shelter for the Traverse City area, that does mean that there is an increased demand for day shelter services, particularly those that are logistically approximate to where Safe Harbor is. The fact that we have Safe Harbor, Grace Episcopal, and Central United Methodist within blocks of each other is very useful, and also that places like the library, that downtown with businesses that can employ people are close by, and other facilities, Goodwill, Munson, are not too far away. But this is the day shelter that is currently operating for most of the day. We don't have an alternative at present. If more money or more opportunities emerge in the future, then that is fantastic. This is only a one-time ask, and it is an amount up two, which, as has been previously stated, if additional grant funding comes through or an additional opportunity emerges, that means that they don't have as much need for resources before this amount would run out, then we get to keep the change. And it does provide, at least for the interim, a solution. It's the only one we have.
Thank you, Commissioner Dredwell. Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, the words "rock and a hard place" were brought up. I actually think it's worse than that because this is a rock and a hard place just till the end of this calendar year. And then there's no assurances, either for the church or for the community or for the city, that there will be funding. And even best case, say there is funding, and then, you know, a grant is written, and maybe it's a multi-year grant, but then that's ongoing, like pursuing funding to help those experiencing homelessness in our community. And we're helping them survive day to day as a community. And there were comments about helping them use computers, find jobs, et cetera, helping folks that maybe have found housing. But we're still on a hamster wheel as a community. And so this conversation is a very important one to have. But there are so many more conversations that need to come, I believe, to the city commission and the next city commission. And they're hard conversations, but they need to be held in public with all the interested parties and individuals because otherwise, we're just on this hamster wheel. And eventually, the community will tire of the hamster wheel. There has to be progress that gets folks into permanent supportive housing. We've made commitment as a resolution to support that effort. But we need to actually take action and show the community that we are taking action. So those are my thoughts. So I will be supporting this tonight, but it's, I don't feel good about it. Thank you.
I just wanted to add, and Commissioner Warner used "hamster wheel", which I think sums up more than probably what I would have fumbled with for a minute. But I think that this is an example. Commissioner Warner is correct in saying that this is something, a conversation we've been having. And I know his question was to ask for more information about how this fits in the whole picture. But we also know we've been getting updates, periodic, quarterly updates from our task force and the predecessor to that, and some of our partners. And I also know that we're not the only community suffering with this. And you know what? Not the only community with the hamster wheel. And I just wanted to take a moment to say that as we look at federal funding being cut, as we look at where state budgets are being debated, that's incredibly important here, too, because at the end of the day, Traverse City isn't the only place. And Traverse City, just like everybody else, has to figure out where that money is going to come from. And where we go back to having state hospitals that were federally and state-funded to where we are today, it's been whittled away and whittled away. And so when we have these conversations, they're very, very local. But we can't forget that they're also very, very global. And so I just wanted to say that as, as we're looking at this, again, this is to get Jubilee House through the end of this calendar year. As they, I know they're working hard with partners. I've seen so much progress being made with the task force and the predecessor group of taking down silos that, you know, I always say, if it's something where somebody says, "Why weren't we doing that before?" It's a great idea because it just means that people have been working so hard to keep moving forward and doing what they need to do and overwhelmed that they actually had a moment to step back and find that connection or the resources or the partners that they needed to improve. And, and I think we're doing that here. And I'm not being Pollyanna about this. This is not an easy solution. And they're, we're not going to guarantee by winter next year that everything will be perfect and smooth and running, you know, with everybody into a house, an apartment in the next couple of months. I wish we were that way. It's not. But I, I think that's where, what we've been doing and stopgap funding like this makes a difference and why it's also not sustainable for our, our piecework. And so I appreciate many of the people who came up and said their ideas for how we can make this better long run, but also acknowledging that this is where we are today. So I want to thank everybody for participating in this conversation again, and including my commissioners that have done that. So with that, I will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for that. And I'm guessing some people are probably going to want to get up for a moment here. If they do, just because it will be a moment. Yeah, we'll take about a five-minute break for everybody, so. Yeah, we'll take about a five-minute break for everybody, so. All right, we're going to call the commission meeting back to order. If everybody can either take their seats or continue conversations out in the vestibule waiting area there, that's totally fine, too. I would just ask if somebody could pull the door if, as conversations continue. Thank you so much. Thank you, Judy and Darcy, for that, helping us with that. Okay, so we'll call the meeting back to order. Our next item of business is a continued conversation of the implementation policy of the two charter amendments that were passed in fall of 2024. So I will let Lauren kick off that conversation, please.
Sure. I don't have a whole lot to go over. I sent a page and a half memo to the commission. I think I tried to address most of the things that were brought up, and if not, I explained in the memo. So I'll just sort of leave it at that in the interest of time, and if there are questions or a motion, we can go from there.
I will say that while we usually, and as we've seen tonight, I usually do encourage us with actions that are kind of outwardly focused, I guess you could say, to have a motion first. This is an implementation of a policy, so if people want to share thoughts on what's been presented, before there's a motion, please feel free, or we can have questions or a motion. So whatever anybody needs to share for this conversation right now, please feel free.
So Heather and Jackie.
Go ahead, Jackie.
Okay, there you go.
Well, I'm trying to look at this through the frame of a voter and being sure that we are being as transparent as possible and that the information that a voter requires to make an informed judgment is there. And while I think you've made some great progress, I find myself hoping for more. And specifically, I'm thinking of a TIF proposal as not dissimilar to a millage proposal or a bond proposal that would be voted on, where, you know, the amount of funds to be raised, the use of those funds, the sponsoring organization, which you addressed, the geographic boundaries, the timing. I think those sorts of pieces sort of set a standard for us to aspire to in our TIF ballot language. And so I'm encouraging us to think about taking this even further and trying to incorporate more of the factual information that a voter would want to be able to make a good decision.
Thank you, Jackie. Heather?
So I can make some comments?
Yep.
Okay, so I still don't think that we're quite there. With the submitting the identical plans, that they could just return indefinitely, I don't, I still think that we're, that this is a, that this risks causing voter fatigue or confusion. I think it even, you could say it subverts the democratic process. And I think that you can, you can actually say, you know, you may submit substantially similar proposal, or a substantially similar proposal may not be resubmitted, but a revised proposal that, you know, is different in scope, et cetera, et cetera. That, it would reinforce voter intent without violating the statutory rights, which is what you're concerned about. I think, I really think that you can get it in there. Plus, if, for example, the TIF 97 comes back, it's exactly the same. It comes back in November, not this November. Well, why not this November? Who pays for that?
If it's on a regular election, which these all would be on a regular election, it's paid for, it doesn't cost the city anything extra.
Oh, it doesn't?
Nope.
Only if it's a special election and then they, and then the...
Precisely.
All right, well, that's good. Okay, then we've got the, there was a note about clarifying the ballot language. It had to do with actually including factual content to help voters make informed decisions. So the purpose of the charter, of the proposal, is it a corridor? Is it housing? Is it cleaning up something? The legal authority, like, is it the city? Is it a brownfield? And the estimated cost, I think those are all very valuable, and they protect against claims of voter confusion or inadequate notice. The initiative and the referendum, here's another one. You are, I believe you are correct, that the statutory TIF plans can't be originated via initiative. But you could explicitly state that that right remains intact. You know, this implementation process applies only to TIF proposals initiated by authorities requiring the city. I mean, something more explicit there that would help avoid misrepresentation and respects both the statutory and the charter-based process. And there was an editorial change, city or city commission, that was suggested by Judy Nelson. I think that that was a good edit there. And finally, no commission action after voter disapproval. I think this one came from Fred Bember. The current draft states the proposal shall not be considered by the city commission if voters reject it. But that, if you're not considering, it just leaves, it seems to leave some legal ambiguity. The proponent could claim the city unlawfully withheld consideration. So why not address the concern by saying something like, "If the proposal is not approved at the election, it shall be placed on the next city commission agenda for formal disapproval or other appropriate action"? Why not? So I would still like to see those five issues addressed.
Do we have other thoughts on the policy from other commissioners? Go ahead, Mitch.
Yes. Commissioner Anderson had remarked that she thinks this should be parallel to a millage or bond proposal. But millages, bonds, city charter amendments all have well-established precedent. Is there any clarity since, to my knowledge, we are in untread legal territory for how this should proceed? Have other, any other communities done something that the city attorney would feel is comparable situation?
I know of no other such charter provisions within the state of Michigan.
Which, from my perspective, regardless of the ultimate implementation language, can leave us open to legal challenge in the future.
Thank you for that. Do we have other thoughts here? I'm just going to share really quickly. Actually, it was something that was brought up at the last discussion of somebody saying, well, what if there, somebody gave the example of what if there was a corridor improvement TIF of some sort, and an affordable housing development that would go in on that same, at the same time? Like, they would say people were voting on them in parallel, and could that cause some confusion? And that scenario was what got me thinking about the objections to having the wording being more open for a second bite at the apple, as it were. I'm thinking of the affordable housing development that might go on with a TIF, that the TIF is unpopular and affordable housing proposal that has cost a group tens of thousands of dollars to put together could get voted down with the, as a, "Well, I don't understand this. We're going to vote no." And I would hate to think that we would write something that would burden a brownfield TIF having to buy a group that's trying to do affordable housing or something along those lines from being able to come back because of a requirement that we wrote in saying it has to be significantly different. That just is something that I've been chewing on since the last time we had that. So even though, you know, well, we may or may not have a motion, we will open this up for public comment. I know there's been some advocates up here, both of my commission and in the public. So I'd be curious about any thoughts on that potential scenario. And that would be, to me, really hard to exempt, but also a major problem that could come out of it if we did say there had to be significant changes. That's something I've been thinking about. Go ahead, Jackie.
Just a thought, that more information upfront is going to minimize the risk of the scenario that you described, that more facts and more clarity and more transparency is going to prevent, mitigate against confusion. That would be my thought on it.
That's a fair thought on it. You know, I think anytime we get into lengthy things on ballots, I think it goes, for me, I worry it goes either way. It could be much, it could be great, and I'm not objecting to that potential discussion at all. I think it could be great. I think it can also lead voters to kind of fatigue as well. Commissioner Stanley?
So just for the clarification of this body and for the public, are we wanting to get this onto the ballot this November?
It's my understanding that, and the mayor sits on the DDA, but it's my understanding that that's not the case.
Okay.
And she can correct me if I'm wrong.
This is, yeah, this is, to my knowledge, this is going through the process right now, because this is the next step after the charter amendments were passed. It has nothing to do with an itinerary for any other proposals from DDA, Brownfield, or anybody, so.
So this is for future use, but this isn't, we aren't in a time crunch to try to get this resolved for the November election?
Exactly.
Right.
And I'll just add to that, not, that's my understanding, not for this November. The purpose in me bringing this forward is so that whenever a TIF proposal comes, and it could be any number of different statutes that it would come under, that they would all be treated in the same manner. So that is the total purpose of this proposal, is so that, you know, there's not one proposed TIF that has a different ballot path or language or anything like that than the next one. They should all be treated the same.
Thank you. The one thing I will point out that has been brought to my attention, and again, I do not feel like we are under a time crunch. I want us to do this right, and I think that seems to be the consensus of everybody up here, is I do know that because Brownfield is going to require a vote now, that a couple of projects that were going to go for Brownfield changed from doing apartments or housing and went to by right for hotels. So we do have to be realistic that a little bit of this uncertainty, I know a lot of people are viewing this just through the lens of, you know, the downtown TIFs, TIF 97 specifically, because Old Town was renewed not too long ago. And I think that's fair. It is certainly part of what we're deliberating. I would say, though, that we consider what we might be losing out on as a community, too, and not rush this process, but also not, you know, kick the can too far down the road or maybe get into trying to put this on the next commission or something like that. I think that is on us to decide at some point. So that's my personal opinion. If anybody disagrees, we're all part of this discussion, but I just wanted to raise that. Go ahead, Heather.
And I agree, but I feel like these are the same issues that we've been bringing up the last two times that this has come before us. They just keep coming back, and they're the same problems. And, I mean, I know you're trying to persuade me that, and the rest of us, that it's okay, you know, what you've got is good to go, but I'm still not persuaded, so.
It would help me to hear from the rest of the commissioners so that I know what direction everybody's looking in, rather, because I've really heard from two, maybe three commissioners. So that would really help me to understand where everybody is at.
Commissioner Stanley and then, oh, Commissioner Warner, you haven't spoken yet, so Commissioner Warner and then Commissioner Stanley.
With the request to say something, yeah, one of the previous meetings, I think I maybe commented on the issue of bringing the same thing back multiple times. I understand the concerns that had been expressed, but at the same time, I don't think it would sit well with the voters at all if the same thing was brought back. I think if it lost the first time and the same thing was brought back, it would get destroyed the second time if it came back, just my understanding of the electorate here. But that's just my opinion. So I don't have a concern so much with that in here. What I do support, the comments I've heard about more information as far as descriptive, whatever it might be, like which TIF, and the example of if there are, say, two TIFs on the ballot, which is unlikely, but it's a good starting point as far as helping the public understand what this is, and maybe even the total dollar amount anticipated over the life and what that life is of the TIF. So, yeah, very factual things, but at least have, and I get it, like, we don't want one of those long ballot proposals, but is there a way to have some concise? Thank you.
That's a good point. Commissioner Stanley, you're raising your hand. Go ahead.
I agree with Commissioner Warner. I think that being clear about the source, whether it's Brownfield, whether it's DDA, whether it's a corridor, what type of TIF, having that kind of information is critical. And I understand there are very strong opinions about being able to bring back something, the same proposal multiple times. And again, on that matter, I also agree with Commissioner Warner.
I would say the same thing about the recurring ballot issues in that if a proposal comes back, except sometimes the voters don't come out until they realize that the time has come and passed, and there is an opportunity for more folks to come and weigh in on something if a proposal is brought back and put on the ballot again. And I'm not afraid of that, if it loses multiple times, or if it failed once and then passes the next time.
I'm just going to go down the line, actually, if you don't mind. And Jackie, you already spoke, but if you wanted to add anything?
Just to add that I agree with Commissioner Warner in terms of bringing identical proposals back for multiple bites of the apple. I think that it could erode voter confidence and add to voter confusion.
Okay. Mitch?
Well, in the case of, say, a school bond millage, the same millage can be brought back multiple times if it fails. I've seen that in, not in TCAPS, but Mises and Alba have seen that exact scenario emerge. I've seen that in, not in TCAPS, but Mises and Alba have seen that exact scenario emerge. So if we're trying to parallel existing referenda policies, I'd say that allowing, to use the metaphor, multiple bites of the apple would be, was more consistent. Yes, if it's substantively the same, then you'd think that the same electorate would vote the same way, but the electorate does change from one cycle to another and there can be a significant difference between if it's a city election year or a presidential year or gubernatorial year. Or if they want to pay for a special election at some other time. Plus, say if something had been initially on the ballot during a presidential year, that even if there is a lot of information provided about the TIF, we've just experienced this past fall, just how swamped our mailboxes can get with election information. So somebody could say, hey, I put this on the ballot, but just looking at how many people went through the ballot and then, we might have had 78% turnout for the top line for president, but then below 50% turnout for some things on the bottom or the back. And an applicant could say, hey, I recognize this, but perhaps I want to give it another go.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mitch. Heather, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'm just going to hang my hat on adding more factual content, the primary purpose, the legal authority and the total cost of revenue capture, as well as getting the, what happens if something is turned down and how it comes back to the commission for formal disapproval or other actions, to get that language in the charter as well. So it's not just hanging out there. Again, I think it's, it makes our position, our legal position, more defensible and it brings closure.
I'll just add, since we're going down the line, and so Lauren has the information, I, you know, we'll hear some public comment here tonight and we'll all think about it some more on the second, the two chances or more. But I agree that the kind of more descriptive language just makes sense. So I think that would be totally fine for us to have you kind of look at that a little, Lauren, and bring something back with a proposal of what that might look like based on your feedback you're hearing. And then, what I'd like to do before we do any kind of general summary, did you have your hand up, Commissioner Stanley? Okay, sorry, you're doing a nice, comfortable look, but I wasn't sure if you raised your hand. So what I would like to do right now is open up for public comment before we do a summary of the discussion. And again, no motions on the table, but because this is an issue I know people are here for to talk about, if anybody would like to make public comment, please feel free to do so right now.
Brett Bimber, 1223 Randolph Street, city resident and involved in Proposals 1 and 2. I've submitted my comments to the city commission by email. Because there is no publication given to that, I'm going to just summarize those comments right now. To allow a proponent of a TIF plan to submit and it to the elections an unlimited number of times is directly contrary to part of the language we added to the city charter last November through these proposals. To ignore the result of the first election if the voters turn it down is to attempt to evade the voting rights of city residents. And for the city commission to establish that affirmatively as the practice that's going to be followed is in complete, it is completely contrary to that part of Proposal 2. Second, I have suggested that if the voters turn down a TIF proposal, that it should then go to the city commission to be voted upon. If the voters vote yes, it goes to the city commission and you vote on it. Well, if the voters vote no, it should similarly go to the city commission. Under the provisions of Proposal 1, at that point, the options of the city commission are to either disapprove the proposed TIF or to decide to take no further action. If the city commission disapproves a proposed TIF in line with the voters, it has rendered moot one of the issues that a planned proponent like the DDA might attempt to raise through litigation. Why not act like you're really the attorney for the city and trying to protect it? You sound like the attorney for the DDA. You should do what is protective of the city's interest and allow the city commission to vote on it. If they vote it down, one of the possible litigation issues is moot. And finally, the city attorney has at great length said why she's not considering proposals that might relate to TIFs but are raised through initiative or referendum petitions. They're not covered by this proposal. They're not being addressed. Well, let's just make that clear. I've told you the sentence to be added and where to add it in Section 3A in the proposal in the proposed implementation policy. Add a sentence that says simply, "This implementation policy does not apply to proposals raised by initiative or referendum."
Thank you Fred.
Judy Nelson, 429 South Garfield Avenue, Traverse City. And I've submitted my comments to Lauren, and I think, I'm hoping that you saw them. I really have two points. One, I continue to think that we should not have multiple submissions of identical proposals. It wastes voters' time, it undermines the previous election results, it subverts the democratic process, it's bad public policy. It's just as simple as that. And unfortunately, I guess I'm not as optimistic as some here. I think there's still a risk that applicants will bring things back over and over again. And yes, there will be voter fatigue, but whether, who knows? Maybe they'll put on a campaign and be successful. The DDA is a classic example. We really voted on the MDF plan last November, even though it wasn't on the election. It was what was driving everybody to put this charter amendment on the, in the charter. And there are some DDA members, and I hear you, that they're not going to do, put it on by November, but there are some DDA members who want to bring forth the MDF plan without any changes. They're still stuck in that. My second point really has to do with more information in the, on the ballot. I think, I think I was the one who raised the question, Mayor Shamro, about you could have two, two things on 14th Street. A corridor plan and you could also have a Brownfield plan to fix, take care of environmental contamination or put in housing where Redmond's and the mobile station are. It's perfectly, and in fact, a developer who wanted to develop there might in fact drive our planning director, who I guess is left, to put forth the corridor plan. And they'd both be on 14th Street at the same time. So I don't think, I really honestly think that it's possible that you're going to have two or three of these amendments or these proposals on the ballot at the same time. I support putting the purpose of the plan on it, the estimated cost and the legal authority. And Commissioner Anderson had a few other things that she mentioned too, which I think were good ideas. So I basically think those are my two primary comments. I made the editorial comment because I think you probably meant make it when you made the change in a couple of other places and didn't add the city. It's important that it be either the city administration or the city commission.
Thank you, thank you Judy. And Judy, I apologize, I didn't mean to misrepresent when I was saying that I thought that's what you were saying. You made a very distinct point, that just got me thinking in that direction, so I didn't want to mischaracterize you, so, but thank you for clarifying that.
You didn't, I wasn't worried about it at all.
Any other public comment at this time?
So I'm taking my GTSSA hat off and I'm putting on the Richard Robbins resident hat. Richard Robbins, resident Traverse City. I just, you know, I've been here since 2018 and I've lived a lot of places in the country. And I've experienced a lot of DDAs, a lot of very successful DDAs and a lot of very successful TIFs. You go to Holland, Michigan, that's a successful DDA and funding mechanisms through TIF. Ann Arbor is another great one. All sorts of them in Washington DC. They're all over the place. They're proven methodologies and practices for vibrant communities. We've got to figure out a way to make this a positive versus what's going on in the public discussion around the negative. Those proposals that were made, clearly, there was a majority of people that voted one way or the other. But one challenge you have with this, it's also what's, who's selling it? And what were the presentations like? If the presentation was different on the other side, maybe it might have gone the other way. I'm not going to predict it did or not, and I, you know, but my point is, these things do work in other areas. And we've got to figure out a way to make these work here because they are extremely important to vibrant communities. You can find a lot of not, non-vibrant communities that don't have DDAs or they don't have TIFs. And they're, I, you can, you can travel the country, and I do, as a salesperson, I used to drive this country. So I got to know a lot about rural America and semi-small town America. This works, these work. And so the idea of bringing something back because it maybe the message wasn't quite right, how do you address that? I don't know. It's an interesting question, but we have to make this work here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Raymond Minervini, representing the Minervini Group, 830 Cottage U Drive. I hear a lot of this discussion tonight and it kind of brings to mind the idea that, you know, the city commission is trying to draft the least objectionable implementation policies from two relatively bad laws being the city charter amendments that have been utilized to impede or stop the process that's defined by state law, being, you know, the different laws allowing for TIF. Of course, I spoke to you before about Brownfield, that's where I come from, although it seems most of the ire was originally generated from DDA TIF. Brownfield is collateral damage, in my opinion. I think a lot of the discussions here just reflect that because of the process for Brownfield TIF or for DDA TIF, this doesn't contemplate a step that the city is now requiring with the charter amendments. I think that for, as it relates to the number of times an applicant can make an application, if they're, I don't think the due process should be hindered for them to make multiple applications. It may be that a proposal is so avant-garde, it takes a cycle or two of an election for the public to catch up with the benefits of something being proposed. Why would we not, you know, how many times did Ralph Nader run for office? Okay, maybe the next time he could win. But the point being is that why would we impede somebody to put forth an idea and do a better job of presenting the case to the public? Of course, the multiple times that these are done, there's going to be very high expense as well. So I honestly don't think the public studying a ballot question and checking a box one way or the other is too much to ask. As it relates to the completeness of the plan, Section 3BII, because of the investment and the time involved in getting an approval, especially for a Brownfield plan, to consider the standard for substantially compliant application rather than the entire state and county process preceding a step to the electorate, making that standard adequate for a TIF proposal to be placed on the ballot. So, yeah, I think, in summary, this is, you know, we're trying to fit a square peg in a round hole and this all comes to light when we're trying to have an implementation policy to do something that state law was not designed to handle, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Justin Reed, Traverse City resident. The TIF stuff, I would say it's a useful tool. You know, the city has image issue. An image issue is, you know, do you want to change the characterization of the neighborhoods? Do, you know, we want to do this, à la carte that. To me, I think the voters, sometimes they don't listen to the facts, instead they become woody teenagers with, you know, changing moods to one swing to the next. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment here?
I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Would I, I'll let Lauren summarize what she's hearing. I know she is always taking notes and ready to bring us feedback. It sounds like there is major consensus for having a little bit more in our description. I heard from, I think I heard of two or three people saying maybe the, eliminating two bites, but it didn't seem to have a majority, but we can certainly have a discussion when we bring it back. But I don't, it didn't seem like there was any action being put forth for you to look into that. And then a couple of the other things that were brought up in public policy, or public policy, whoops, public comment, could, you know, we can address that at the next one as well, but it didn't seem to be anything substantive to you, for you to do research on. Is that about what we should expect or did you have other things we should?
Yeah, no, that pretty much sums it up. I took a lot of notes.
Use your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I took a lot of notes, so I agree with what you just summarized, Mayor, and I can make those changes and bring it back to a future meeting.
Okay. Does anybody, did I miss anything from anybody of things that Lauren needs to do a little more legwork on? Okay.
And thank you for allowing me to put you on the spot.
All right, well then, we will have that brought back in another meeting then with some of the feedback and input that we just got tonight. And with that, we will move on now to some more discussion of our strategic action plan and I'll hand that over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Shamro. I just want to take just a couple of minutes to talk about next steps with Traverse City's strategic action plan. And we talked about this a little bit at your July 21st meeting. The reason why I'm here is just to sort of solidify that back in the public's mind and to show how we went back to the reps at Future IQ and distilled your feedback and hopefully have incorporated it. And if we haven't, now is your chance to speak up formally, anyway. And so we have, of course, the six strategic pillars that surfaced after a robust community engagement process. I don't need to go through those, but as far as the OKRs or objectives and key results, I just want to put it in everybody's mind that objectives are really qualitative descriptions, aspirational descriptions of where you would like to go, sort of the dream statement, if you will. And then key results are quantitative measures, so things that can be measured that truly can show if you've achieved the objective, if you've gotten to your dream. And they should be specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and time-bound. And something that I will work really hard at with the commission is to make sure that that's the case. So that if anything's suggested that seems like, well, I don't think that's a key result, I will respectfully raise that so that it is something that truly is a key result. And then just with respect to the process specifically, of course, the city commission on June 2nd unanimously adopted the strategic action plan. The objective alignment, we will work on. There will be a community-driven foundation with respect to honoring and reflecting the community's input that was captured in the plan and then translating those into actionable objectives. We'll employ, as I said, that OKR framework to connect it to the strategic action plan. And then, lastly, I think with respect to timeline is there will be with city commissioners a short survey. This will not be anonymous, just so everyone's clear. Any commissioner's input should be clearly identified to those commissioners. Any commissioner's input should be clearly identified to those commissioners. And there will be one-on-one interviews with representatives from Future IQ to clarify focus areas. Candidates will also be engaged through a questionnaire that will also not be anonymous, so that it is clear where those candidates stand. And then in September, we'll work on developing a facilitated session with the commission where David from Future IQ will be here in this room, or whatever room we're in, with you. And then during October and November, we'll draft that OKR framework to support long-term execution and budget integration. And I'm really excited about drilling this down to the department level. And I believe our department heads are, as I had said previously, looking forward to that kind of clarity. And then the final recommendations will be December and January, and we'll work on finalizing those priorities. And there are certainly an opportunity for mid-fiscal year budget amendments if it warrants that. And so I just want to get that out there, too. And that's really it. I just wanted to get that out there. If you think there's anything that's missing or doesn't seem quite right, it'd be really handy to hear that now, or if something occurs to you later, that's fine, too. But this is meant to be a public discussion. So, thank you.
Jackie?
I, just to reiterate a point that I made with Mr. Marin tet earlier, I'd really like to be sure that the information we gathered from the community about values becomes an important part of that community-founded starting point.
Yeah, agreed.
Any other comments? I think it's a nice overview, so I don't think we're looking for super in-depth. But if anybody had anything missing, or, I mean, that's great.
All right, thank you. Here we go.
Well, pass it on to you now, speaking of feedback, on your summary for your evaluation, the evaluation process.
Yes, and we have Becky Ewing here, who I'd like to invite to the podium to provide a few minutes of comments and thoughts on the evaluation process. But I did place in the packet a memo from me with some initial thoughts on what could be priorities for me and recognizing that there's a whole lot of other stuff in here, or in the mix. But these were sort of my initial thoughts on focus areas. One is to work heavily on OKRs and this whole strategic action plan and informing our budget process. I mentioned a little bit earlier during the Jubilee House item that I will be working closely with our treasurer's office and already have, and I appreciate, and I've expressed this to them, they're embracing their easy arms around the idea of multi-year budgeting, recognizing that the city commission's limited by charter to adopting a budget one year at a time, but the document will contain a multi-year forecast. And we're going to significantly revamp the format. And if you're at all wondering what direction I'm going in that, you want to preview it, I don't know if I'm going to say this right, but San Luis Obispo in California, I think, has a really good document. So take a look at that. If you think anything should be a little different, please let me know. I also want to work extensively on our organization's culture. And I want to drive an organization that's rooted in feedback, innovation, mutual respect, openness, and trust. And that includes a focus with the city commission, employee, staff team, and the community. I talked a lot about that a couple of weeks ago. And then simply learning the role. So there's that. And then, very important to me, and I believe to you also, is ensuring specifically for me, my work-life balance, and then for the employees, my support of the same for them. And so those are my initial thoughts. And at this point, if it's okay, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Ewing to share some thoughts on how the whole evaluation process could work. So thank you for being here, Becky.
Oh, it's my pleasure. Thank you for having me. Becky Ewing, 531 Randolph Street. I am a city resident, if you need that. So I actually helped the city commission through the last annual review performance for both the city manager and the city attorney. And through that process, have a really, I think, a really great sort of 360 perspective of the commission and the department heads. And then we also included, just as a reminder, we also included the director of the DDA and the director of TCLP and also the assistant city manager. So it was a really robust process. And as Benjamin said, and as the mayor and mayor pro tem have agreed to, there is a real need to begin to ensure that that feedback starts off in a really positive way and in a thorough way, but without adding too much weight to that process. So I worked with Benjamin and looked at the possibility of frequent reviews upfront. So for the first six months of his tenure as interim city manager, to have this really clear and concise feedback loop that he is able to get the commission's views and then also include the department heads and then those other three individuals that we spoke about. So I put together a proposal to do that work and trying to be really respectful of the surveys that you're already asking to be included in, especially for the commissioners. But every other, the cadence is sort of every other month, there would be a session, a closed session, to go through what we're hearing and facilitate a conversation with the city commission and Mr. Marin tet in closed session to really open those lines of communication and get that feedback. So kind of spaced it out in that way. We would take, all the city commissioners would be included in each, sort of each of the three sessions. And then for the department heads and the DDA, TCLP, and the assistant city manager, we would pick, just out of a hat, four representatives to have an hour-long conversation with, or less than an hour, whatever is needed. And then in the next period of time, we would include another five people. And then in the final one, we'd have another five people. So making sure that we're getting everybody's feedback. And then there's an option, too, of doing a brief survey with some questions that could potentially change over the course of that six months, depending on what we're learning and depending on what the commission is really needing in order to evaluate and guide Mr. Marin tet in his new role. So, yeah, I think it would be a good process and still maintaining that sort of 360-degree perspective, which seemed to be very helpful. The first time that the city had done that was this past round. So making sure we're including folks. So happy to answer any questions.
And I just want to add real briefly that I want to thank specifically the mayor and the mayor pro tem, who sort of, I know probably others had this too, but reflected on just the process that's used and to have more routine check-ins, which is important to me, but also, I think, was a reflection for commissioners as the employer. So I appreciate that.
I just wanted to say really quickly, and we've kind of touched on this, that to that end, you know, Benjamin is interim. He's got six months. We want to have periodic check-ins. He wants to do that to make sure he's doing a good job. We had previously, Mark and I had previously had conversations with Becky about recommending that, no matter what, at the top, before any interviews would happen or anything, we said, you know, every year we check in and nothing in between. And so we wanted, you know, if that made sense as she was going through the process of having some kind of a recommendation for even five years in for a city manager or our long-established city attorney, being able to check in more often and make that more normal. And I just wanted to make that statement that I think sometimes when we go into closed sessions, people automatically assume there's a bad reason. And I just would say that most people don't have to have their job reviews or job, you know, feedback or reviews done streaming on Facebook. And so while we do want to hold everybody publicly accountable, we also need that time as employers to be with our employees. And so you will be seeing that a lot more often over the next few months and hopefully, whatever commission looks like going forward, more frequently as feedback, as just part of the regular process, too. Go ahead, Mai.
So I just want to get some clarity here that what's before us this evening, this recommendation, is to approve of this process. And that if the process is approved, is there then a contract for Ms. Ewing's time and her services that would come before either this commission or the, well, it would have to come before this commission? Or is this part of the previous contract?
It would be a new, technically a purchase order, but essentially a contract. And that would not go back in front of the city commission. So if you approve this process, it's within the city manager's spending authority. And I would only authorize it, of course, if you approve the process.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say that I appreciate this whole process. It's been a slightly dysfunctional round here for the last couple of years. And anything that improves lines of communication, whether it's from the residents to the commission, the commission to the city manager, the commission to the mayor, the commission to the city attorney, the city manager to the staff, anything that strengthens that can lead to the possibility of stronger, more satisfying outcomes. So I approve of this process.
Great. Does somebody, we do actually have a motion to formalize it. Does somebody want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion that the city commission approves the proposed evaluation process for interim city manager Benjamin Marin tet as mutually proposed by Mayor Amy Shamro, Mayor Pro Tem Mark Wilson, and interim city manager Benjamin Marin tet.
Support. Thank you. Commissioner Stanley and Commissioner Anderson. Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, quick comment for the city manager and maybe the treasurer's office on item number two. Something to consider, not just looking forward for three years, but if there's, since the computer's going to do the work once the numbers are typed. Looking backwards, some number of years also can be helpful as far as noticing trends, especially if adjusted for inflation or something. Like are we, is this, maybe it's for inflation as well as per capita or something, but just, you know, we can think of healthcare costs are always going up and going up and going up. And how will that? That's just an example, and that's not necessarily for us. But whatever city commission is seated here, I think there could be some benefits to at least consider looking at, like, is our, as a community, our spending relatively stable in whatever category coming into a year, even if we decide it's time to spend more on that? But at least coming into that year, knowing what's been going on.
Absolutely. And just sort of on that note, just because I have the opportunity, I just want to share that, of course, the city commission approved the budget back on June 2nd. That doesn't create a license to spend at all. And there are some things that we're revisiting at the staff level. And I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? All right, then I'm going to open this up. Any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, and I am going to hand this one over to Sarah, actually. And this is the appointment of our interim deputy city clerk.
Yes. So everybody asked me in the last meeting, who's going to be your deputy? Well, we needed to have internal conversations in our office. And my lovely staff and I did have conversations. And I'm happy to report that Rebecca Adler with my office has agreed to step up into the role as interim deputy city clerk. And I couldn't be happier. She's kind of my right-hand gal, and she will serve us very well.
We already know she does a great job wrangling us to get us signed up for the ad-hocs that were all signed and everything else. So I'm sure she will serve you well.
Absolutely.
And just procedurally, the reason this is before you, and it's in your packet, but just in case the public's interested, is there's certain duties that are delegated to the city clerk that's important for separation of duties and powers. And the city clerk needs to have a deputy city clerk that serves at their pleasure so that there is that proper separation. You approving the resolution, appointing Rebecca Adler as interim deputy city clerk, allows Ms. Lutz to formally delegate certain things that are important to the city's continuity of service, including reviewing financial disbursements and a whole host of things. But that is the primary reason that this is in front of you. And so I just wanted to make that clarification. And I, too, am thrilled that Rebecca is stepping up into this role.
All right, unless, any questions, or I would take a motion. Go ahead, Jackie.
I move that the resolution approving interim city clerk Sarah Lutz's appointment of Rebecca Adler as interim deputy city clerk effective August 4th, 2025 be adopted.
Support.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. All right, any other discussion?
She does a great job. Happy to have her.
She does, indeed. We're glad she said yes, really.
Me, too.
Any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Oh, you're most welcome. Happy to give you a little relief there officially. All right, now we're on to our appointment section. And, oh, it's finally loading here. Okay, we've got our Brown Bridge appointments. And this was, oh, sorry, this is creation of an ad hoc. Sorry, I thought we were confirming. Are we?
You are confirming.
Yeah, we are confirming. Sorry. It was, it's loading very slowly, and I was trying to guess, guys. Sorry, I didn't guess right. All right, now it's loaded. Okay.
I'm happy to make this.
Please do.
Recommendation that Judy Nummets, James Kerr, and Jaclyn Andrus be reappointed to the term expiring October 2, 2028 on the Brown Bridge Advisory Committee as recommended by the ad hoc committee consisting of Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, Commissioner Anderson, and Commissioner Tredwell.
Support. All right, thank you, Commissioner Shaw and Anderson. Any comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, and then we've got some Parks and Rec appointments. I believe this was one that was, no other applicants, and both were interested in continuing on. So if anybody had anything, comments they want to share, or just make a motion. Go ahead, Jackie.
I move that Scott Maury and Jennifer Loop be reappointed to the term expiring September 1st, 2028 on the Parks and Recreation Commission as recommended by the ad hoc committee consisting of Commissioner Shaw, Commissioner Anderson, and Commissioner Werner.
Support.
I'll give it to Commissioner Werner, since he was on the ad hoc. But thank you for that, Mark. Any other comments?
With our new appointment process in a couple of months, this wouldn't have even had an ad hoc, so.
That's true. All right, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you to all our continuing servants. And we're always grateful for the public and a reminder that you can always fill out the paperwork to be on our boards. We'll move on now to reports and correspondence. Does anybody have anything to report out from their respective boards or assignments?
Just that there is a planning commission meeting tomorrow night, 6:00 PM in this room. One of the major considerations will be a proposal for a hotel to be built at 124 West Front Street. Be there or be square.
Great.
And as a subset of planning commission, the Rumparian Buffer ad hoc is having a meeting on Thursday, as already announced. We do have draft language, so we'll be reviewing that, and we'll see how that goes.
So that might actually come to the commission soon?
Soon is a relative term. We'll see.
Great. Heather?
On Friday night, at Friday Night Live, the Arts Commission will be represented for the first time in my known memory. My husband Duncan and I will be manning the table there. Come and see us.
What do we get to do with you? You guys have craft or just talking to people?
We're just talking to people.
Oh, great.
You're not juggling?
Hear more about our fun and amazing mural festival that's coming up.
That's a craft.
Yes, that's right. But I know Commissioner Shaw has worked very hard on the mural festival, and so that's one of the exciting things Arts Commission is coming up, so. All right, I think that is it from me. I don't think I have anything to report. It's so hard to remember when the last meetings were at this time of year. So with that, I will move ahead, and we will now open up for any general public comment. So anything under the sun, anything on the docket tonight, or anything totally different?
I just have something that wasn't on the agenda. Leah, I'm one of those citizens here at Traverse City, and I wanted to talk about the possible removal of hydrofluoric acid from the water. The new studies that are coming out, especially like JAMA and different NIH studies, show that countries like Sweden, Germany, people that never adopted fluorinated water have the same rates of tooth decay as the US, but we have generally lower IQ rates in the cities that do fluorinate the water. It is a byproduct of a fertilization company. It was hazardous, it was a hazardous waste, and now it's in our water. And there are a lot of things showing that there is a negative health consequence. It is not calcium fluoride, so it's not bound to calcium. So it does cross the blood-brain barrier, and it is an endocrine disruptor. And I do have various studies. And I was wondering if we could just consider having a public vote with the new research, seeing how citizens feel, and work on maybe getting it out of the water. the water. But that's all I wanted to present today.
Thank you.
And we can connect with you afterwards about your request on a public vote. I'll just say real quickly, it's not allowed under Michigan law, but I'll be happy to chat with you afterwards.
What's not allowed under?
Having a public vote on whether or not to have fluor, hydrofluos, I don't know how to say it, in the water. But we can talk more afterwards.
But it is, I was about to say anyways, because it's two sides. We do usually vote on it publicly at a city commission meeting every year, though, so that is something that at least the commission body usually votes on or takes action on. It's just not up, subject to a vote on like a ballot. So to clarify that for you, and feel free, if you wanted to, to share with staff or email us any of the information you wanted to share, too.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, switching hats. Richard Robbins, Traverse City, representing the Grand Traverse Safe Streets Alliance. Hey, I wanted to thank the city commission and the city staff that I work with, we work with. We've had some great interaction, and we've had some great work. We're moving forward, and it's a great place to live because we all want a better, a better city for multimodal transportation. So we, and we really look forward to the continued productive relationship. I have two, I have an update for you. If you go on our website, we've just put up a, you've seen some of these projects with the slider that's really cool, showing what the current situation is and what it potentially could be around the Bryant Park crossing of M-37. Please take a look at it. This is a very important topic, and there's a lot of citizen interest and support. So we've added that. We've got, we've, we have some engineers that have looked at this and come up with some ideas, you know, so that we can open the discussion with engineering and planning and et cetera. So take a look at that. And also, we're having discussions with MDOT around Division and Grandview Parkway. It is, I almost, I literally almost got killed coming, coming on Bay Street. You know, I've got a, I've got a, I've got the signal I can go, and the no turn on red is not there, and I almost got hit. So we're having those discussions. They agree that something has to be done, so we're working with MDOT on that, just to let you know that we're not just here in front of you, we've got a lot of other irons in the fire. The two other things I wanted to ask of today is, the GTSSA would really like, I know it's in the city attorney's office around review around the, the complete streets ad hoc committee recommendations and so on. And so I just, we're looking forward to at the next meeting, that hopefully that can come forward so that we can then have, you know, a multimodal transportation committee, permanent committee around, or whatever we want to call it, so that we can all have citizen input as, it will be very powerful. So we're looking forward to that. And then also, though, much of the long-term, long-line painting for the city has been completed, and I must say, not all of it, if you take a look. Virtually none of the pedestrian crossings, bike lanes, et cetera, which is called flatwork, has been completed. We're requesting, this is what we're requesting, we're requesting that the city commission communicate the need for the street department to make a presentation at potentially the next meeting, a public meeting, around, at the regular meeting, to show their plan on A, what is the plan to bring it in-house? B.
Are you talking about street painting?
Street painting, yes. B, flat, flat line, the flat, the flat painting, not the long line, because that was decided to be difficult. But anyway, B, a specific timeline for completing that, and C.
Thank you, Richard.
Yeah. What, what do you do, C?
Pardon me?
You can say C. You can finish and do C.
And C is what, what's the timing process to make sure this doesn't happen again so that we don't get into this problem anymore? Thank you.
Thank you. Just to temper expectations, most things for, to be on an agenda are presented about 10 days out, so that's, window's probably pretty much already closed to have a whole presentation ready, but it is noted, and I know Benjamin's taking furious notes over here, so just wanted to be, be clear with you on that, or be transparent on that. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, Justin.
Justin, me, Charcy resident, about Division, about, oh, about Grandview Parkway. I was on my way today here, and there was kid and her mom, not crossing, it's crosswalk, was just only maybe five steps away, and just went across just to jaywalk. And maybe they're drinking the hydrochloric acid, but, you know, I can, I can say this is, with the, with, with the, with the plans, with M-72 and M-22, I think those plans are not going to change. It's still going to be a roundabout, there's still going to be flashing, there's still going to be hawk signals on Grandview Parkway further down to, to Trayburn Road. And also the Bryant Park, there's, there is going to be a established, still in design, but they're still doing plans for a non-motorized trail from Bryant Park up to the next signal, which I can't think of the road name. That's Eastern Avenue. So from Eastern Avenue down to Bryant Park, there is going to be something that's going to be there. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment for tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back. Any commissioners feeling talkative? All right, seeing none, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting for tonight. Thank you, everyone. I don't know who puts the agenda together, but it was missing.